I have a light in the mic.
This conference will now be recorded.
Fifteen seconds. Ready Dan?
Yep, we're good to go.
Steve, ready? Alright, good evening everybody, welcome to the May nineteenth Select Board meeting, start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, that is to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
Do we have any minutes?
We have three sets of minutes that have disappeared. Uh, for April twenty second, May first, and May fifth. Um, I was not here on April five second. So if anyone wants to come.
Sure.
I make a motion that we, uh, approve the minutes of April twenty second, May first, and May fifth.
Second.
That's fine, you can still put these anywhere here.
Okay.
All in favor?
I.
I.
I'm sorry.
There are two absentees.
But I was here. But you were here.
Yeah.
But you made it all together, so I couldn't understand.
The call was just.
Oh, yeah.
Do you second it, Whitney?
I'll probably do that.
I did second it, yeah.
That's fine. Uh, addition to the agenda with the consent of the board chair, I have your report, there are no additions tonight. Appointments, we have the best own branding committee, uh, the presentation of the town logo. So... Steve, you want to cue this one up, or?
I was just gonna turn it right over to the branding committee.
Very good.
Times of the essence tonight.
That way.
That we shall. Um, so, thank you for hearing from us this evening. Danielle, um, our consultant is online, as well as Katie McLaughlin, our creative designer from locality. And they have prepared a short presentation to share with the board, to kind of show where we started, and how we ended up where we got, um, as well as our recommendation for the town logo going forward. Um, at this point, we are only presenting the logo, we are not looking to get into the town seal or the branding guideline, although those are items that are concurrently being worked on, at this point, we're simply focusing on the logo.
Danielle just made a request to be able to present.
Yes.
Oh, I see.
No, it's one of those.
I thought I could bring it up.
There it goes. Yep.
Take them off mute.
She has done that.
Can you unmute Danielle and Katie? You hear me? Yep, we can hear you Katie.
Great. And can you hear me through my screen?
Yes, we can, and we can see your screen Danielle, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kate, for the introduction, I'm just trying to get my screen share on my screen working. Um, hi Select Board, thank you so much for giving us a few moments of your time this evening. Um, in terms of what we have to share with you, we have a quick recap of our timelines, some context as to how we got here this evening, which Maude is gonna make it on. I'll chime in, share a little bit more about our community engagement process. Katie will jump in and walk us through the design process, and then Kate will present our final logo recommendation, and then request some time for a discussion with you and any next steps. So, right over to Maude. Um, oh, and before I do so, quickly, uh, these are all the committee members, these are all the folks that have been a part of the process, um, very, very closely following the process, and of course, the community in Waltham have been instrumental as well, but just wanted to name the folks that have been guiding and guiding here as well.
So, as, as you all know, the branding project was one of the key recommendations of the rapid recovery plan in 2021. Subsequently, this board approved funding, ARCA funding, to be dedicated to realizing those. Uh, when I began, this project wasn't on our radar because we weren't, we didn't think that we had enough funding or time to realize it. We, as you know, it came before you last year, and we had this epiphany, in fact, we could. And so, uh, with your guidance, we went and moved forward, working together really closely with the communications committee, um, and then, uh, formed the, the project, brought onboard Danielle to project manage. Uh, and as you can see, we've been moving through here, so we've come together, formed a committee, there's been all sorts of community engagement, uh, a lot of, uh, conversations, uh, around the design, as it's been iterated across here, we'll get into more of these details there. But we're, we're really on track, um, to deliver the brand. One of the places that's, it's gonna be realized first is in Wayfinding, which is a concurrent project that is linked up. Um, and, uh, and we're gonna be moving into that phase next, as well as the rollout of other brand materials. Uh, but we're, we're really excited to present this to you tonight, and, uh, keep, keep on our, our timeline for moving into these next steps.
Thank you Maude, um, and just to recap, I know many of you were part of this process, but way back in January, we kicked off with a staff survey. Um, we did form a visual town committee. We have been holding weekly or bi-weekly meetings of that committee, public meetings where folks have been popping in, um, it's been on public access TV, um, there have been letters that have come through, folks, some folks have attended, um, multiple of those sessions. Then in March, we did hold an open house, um, to, to, that, that open house here, where folks weighed in on different visual identities, uh, told us really what Belcher Town meant to them. Um, at that open house, we also launched a public survey, we took that, um, given more feedback from, from folks in the community. And then, um, we also had an opportunity for the public to weigh in. So, last, uh, last week, we presented this new brand, um, identity, and we held a public vote, and we have the, we took the result from that vote today, and had, um, the committee for a community vote. Those were all for areas from the public, the input, and the feedback participation.
Okay, I'm gonna say it.
Danielle, yeah, your, your mic is coming in and out a lot Danielle, so it's hard to, to pick up exactly what you're saying.
So I'm not sure if you're moving away from the mic, or, I'm not sure what's happening, but your words are important.
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Much better.
Okay. Um, I, I'm hearing a lot of reverb and feedback from the room, but, um, you let me know if you can. But I just wanted to walk you all through the various moments for public input and participation. So, we launched with a staff survey that was specifically looking at municipal feedback before we talked to the broader community, that took place in January. Then, we formed a public town committee that had several waves of new folks joining onto that committee, once they heard about the work that was happening. Those, uh, that committee met, uh, started out bi-weekly, and then we sort of shifted into weekly meetings as our timeline, um, picked up. And we have held public comment at those meetings, we've read, um, email communications from the town, and I think folks have, have known about this meeting, it's been recorded and presented on, on public access TV. Um, once we, we hired Katie, the graphic designer, locality studio, we held, um, our open house in March, where we invited the community in to tell us more about what Belcher Town really means to them, weigh in on some different visuals to see which resonated the most. And it was at that open house that we also launched a public survey. Um, that survey was live for several weeks, um, and got pretty good traction. So, the results of that survey, the results of the open house, the committee conversations, the staff survey, have all been drivers of the final design and the brand concepts that, um, that we're gonna look at this, this evening together. And finally, we, we narrowed it down to two design concepts that we presented to the public last week. They had a few days to vote, and we're, we're very excited that we had over three hundred votes, um, which is pretty incredible. And we'll, we'll get into the, the results of that vote, um, uh, in just a few minutes, but I'm going to pass it to Katie to share more about what the design process actually entailed. You still hear me all right? I muted for a minute, but thanks Danielle. So, uh, Danielle went over a lot of the community engagement portions, and throughout that process, my firm is al- also putting together a research document. Uh, this included looking at existing Belcher Town designs, whether that be individual logos, social media, uh, the website, other plans and documents that you all have. We then did a peer community audit, the committee was very helpful on that. Um, we came up with communities across the country, but especially near and around Belcher Town, that could be great peer considerations. And the committee added some within that for us to look at for inspiration. Uh, like I said, did town research on demographics, on ongoing, recent updates to the town itself. And we then kind of turned all that into, um, in combination with all the public engagement, three initial black and white, kind of simple concepts to decide creative direction. We then refined those into two, into, um, a couple branding options. And then went through some rounds of revisions into one final recommendation. So these are the very rough, simple, three initial concepts. Um, these are based on things we heard from the public, ideas from the committee, and peer community logos. These are the three official brand designs that we presented to the committee, uh, each kind of following a different flavor of what we had heard and what we had researched. The committee itself, uh, was really interested in the first one of this kind of bar that you see, um, with the second one being a semi-second choice. So we were to try some different things out with it, changing up the library steeple for the, uh, Cold, Cold Spring Orchard building, adding some trees, uh, changing up some shapes, just to get a sense of what we could do with the brand. And we like to just kind of flip through, just to show that we tried everything, and we made sure to try and include whatever we could, as Belcher Town has many unique buildings and, and landscapes we wanted to draw from. So, these were kind of the three final ones that the committee discussed, with the lower option on the left, and then the one on the right being shown to the public for vote. And, do you want me to take this, or Danielle, do you wanna talk about the voting?
No, I think she got to vote, I think we got to vote.
Sure, so, um, the results of the vote were pretty clear, um, we voted eighty-six percent in favor of option A, which is on the left. And after discussion, um, that we decided that they, the, the one recommendation that they had, and some of the community feedback we had, was to include a little bit more, um, uh, that would specify that the, this, the sort of design on the right was referring to the town development. So this morning, um, they were able to add in the gazebo, so this is the final recommendation that the committee voted on. Kate, would you like to prepare a little bit more? We have, we could, or we can look at the specific source and then pass it back to Kate. I don't know if Katie can make a fair piece of this. Sure, I can quickly go through this. Um, kind of everything was pulled from something in Belcher Town. So, uh, we had gotten a lot of feedback about the library, and that being a key image place within town from public engagement. So, instead of using the actual shape of the library, we pulled the color from the library. And you can see, we've got the agricultural rural area, Quabon, literally any other water source, uh, so, River, Lake Wallace, those were all brought up in the public engagement. The town got, and now being a bit clearer with the gazebo added. It focuses upon forest and landscape, and the trails, hiking that you all have. And then last, the kind of exact point that was important to the committee was ensuring that it was very open and flowing. Um, we can figure out that represented the town most. Now, I'm gonna say, Kate, do you have anything else to add?
I don't have anything else to add at this time. Um, I think you guys have covered it really well, just a point of note for those in the room. The boards that were at the open house are on display here in the Select Board room. Um, so you can see the handwritten notes that people provided with some of their key phrases, um, around those words of what things meant to people in Belcher Town. So, in one of the previous slides that Danielle led up here, there was words across the bottom, and it showed you the percentage and the quantities of people that mentioned those words. So we spent exactly this slide here. So we spent time looking at the words that came up most in people's feedback, and that's how we gathered what was important to the community, and what we needed to show within the logo. So there, you can see, you know, the rural feel, the agricultural feel, as well as, you know, the Quabons and lakes and the rivers. Um, those words were what were repeated in sentiment through the online surveys, as well as when people filled out these surveys over here, and then, you know, put their dots on the board for their first choice and second choice, as to what Belcher Town felt to them. And that's how we came to the images within this logo, we're taking those words that people were most commonly associating with our town, and using those to represent the town within the logo. Um, so the font that's picked is a, is an open font, it's a little playful, um, it shows a progressive look forward, um, inviting if you will. We evolved through different revisions with the water, so here you can see we have a nice flat plain on the water, signifying the Quabon, as opposed to, you know, waves, like an ocean or something like that. Um, you know, we added in the barn and the tractor for more of the agricultural feel to go with the rolling hills. Obviously, it's mountainous here, so the different hill structures in there played big into that. And then the trees, you know, for our wooded forest area, as well as the trees that you see on the Quabon along with the, the Quabon. On the common, um, along with the gazebo that you also see on the common too.
I just wanna say, um, we have thirty minutes to go through this entire.
I'm done.
Only because, and, and so I'm not meaning to, um, I, I just want us to.
Sure.
Tell us what we need to do, um, so that we can.
Well.
Help support this, um, because there, there is a packed agenda, and in thirty minutes, this board dispands.
So, at this point, we are looking.
So, the committee, the Belcher Town committee voted six in favor to recommend this as the logo to this committee, uh, one abstention and, and zero objections. So, we now put it forward to Select Board, if you have any questions for us, we're here, and if not, understand, we've got a packed agenda.
And we are looking to have you approve the logo, or to send it back to committee saying, we're not happy with it, keep going.
Okay.
Um, but otherwise, we're looking to have it approved, so that we can continue working on the next steps, which are the branding guideline, and working with town clerk for the seal and stuff like that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
Very good, uh, board comments.
Um, I just wanna say one thing, um, as Danielle likes to say, "All the flowers to Danielle, Katie, and the committee." Um, I think we all worked really hard on this, and it was really emotional, it was a really tight deadline, and something happened today, where we just went, "That's it." And like, I'm really proud of this logo, like it, I have an emotional connection to this logo. As soon as the gazebo got put on there, I said, "This is it." So, I'm, I'm really proud of it.
I think the work is excellent. Um, I'm, I'm really proud of you too. Um, uh, it, it's obvious that you spent a great deal of time on this, and were very thoughtful, um, especially in terms of your approach. Uh, can I see the, can I see the logo again, um? Yep.
Let me shoot some screen for a second.
Yes.
Okay, so, I, I'll answer for a minute, but, I, I have, I have one comment. I like it, I think it's great, don't worry, this, don't worry, there we go. I'm, I'm wondering if the barn can't be a barn that we recognize. You know, like, and, like, uh, Cold Springs, or, um.
Nesvee.
Nesvee.
She's not a good presenter.
Um, I, and, and I don't know what that means in terms of the timeline, but, we, it, it would be nice if people go, "Oh yeah, I recognize that barn."
I can, Katie can certainly address that, 'cause that's something that, that we did discuss in the meeting, so if you'd like to take a couple minutes, we can, we can delve into that deeper.
Um, sure, I mean, it's more, I know you're on a timeline, so, I don't even know if that's a possibility. It just would be nice to see a Belcher Town icon, you know, I think.
I can add quickly, uh.
Okay.
So, yeah, we, we did do a couple variations, um, you saw earlier the Cold Spring Orchard. Um, some people thought it was a bit confusing of what that might be, and otherwise, that part of, or that building overall doesn't really have anything unique to it. I also looked at Lamson Brook, uh, and kind of one issue I see with that is even the, the main barn door looks like a regular door as opposed to a barn. Uh, so we, we, the committee was worried that it wouldn't translate completely as agriculture because of those things, but those points are definitely valid, we may discuss.
Yeah, the Cold Spring one is one I thought was.
Yeah, what about this one? I think, I think you're more looking at the, the full barn, uh, Katie.
I, you know what, I'm just bringing it up as a point, I've said my piece, I don't know what other people think.
Any thoughts?
I mean, we, we let the committee decide and they voted for the recommendation, and I know that having gone to some of the more recent, uh, conversations, uh, about all of the details, there was many discussions about these types of, uh, the questions that you have. So, um, I think they, they made a decision at the committee level, and, I mean, it wasn't part of the conversation today, but based on what Nicole has said, um.
Well, it's more, it's more that if it's, if we're gonna do a barn, can't we do a barn that's a Belcher Town barn?
So, again, I'm gonna say, and again, I wasn't a part of the committee, I mean, I don't know that I could pick out a barn from anywhere in town that I calls to mind. Like, I can't think of one, to be honest with you, I don't know that anybody would. I think it's more the representation of a barn, of an agricultural barn. Um, that is the key component here, but.
I think I could pick out a Cold Springs, but anyway.
Yeah, no, all I will contribute is, same, I was able to join the branding meeting, um, this past week, it was the only meeting that I have joined, and I just listened in. And I feel that so much work that's done in town is done by committees, and we entrust them to, to go through the process, and I heard them say they had a, a six to zero vote, so I'm, I'm in favor of it, and thank you for your work.
And I think it's neat.
So, I, I will say, I believe this version on the bottom left was one of the really specific town barns. And, um, there was a lot of, when we presented this and shared this, the committee said, "This is confusing, this is not distinct, this looks like it could be a pagoda, this looks like it could be anything other than a local barn." And then, um, one of the suggestions that we got to make it feel more Belcher Town came, came from Orage, and sent us, um, some photographs of Wetherby in town. So, um, this was, I think Katie's attempt at blending something that is recognizable as a, a barn, um, that has some elements that are unique and special to Belcher Town, but also recognizable as a barn. Because when you get from the specific, as she said earlier, just looks like a store, or it's hard to really distinguish, um, what those elements are. And these are gonna be right from far away, right? They're gonna be on times that we're not gonna be like, looking at them on a zoom screen or close up all the time. So there needs to be this recognizable element, but, um, but I, I hear the feedback, so, and, and we, everyone, everyone sharing.
This was not an easy process, and I think when we decided to move forward on this, uh, idea to brand Belcher Town, uh, we knew that there were gonna be a lot of voices in the room. We, um, intentionally put together a committee full of a mix of a dir- but diverse group of, uh, individuals from all walks of demographics within our town. And, um, I think it's amazing that we all came together, and that you guys had this emotional connection today, and, um, I'm very appreciative to everyone who put this together.
Yeah, and all I was gonna add was just, if the committee felt like they needed more time, it'd be open to that conversation, but I don't hear that coming up.
We don't have more time.
Right.
Kind of thing.
Why don't we have more time?
I mean, I can address part of that. So, the, there were decisions made in terms of forming a committee that weren't originally within the timeline, and then decisions made by the committee to dedicate more time to community engagement, both in these instances and then with the survey, um, that pushed it into the timeline for Wayfinding, which is a state grant funded project with a end of fiscal deadline as well. And our consultants for Wayfinding signage gave us, um, they were very flexible, but, and, and kept pushing back along with us in the, the branding group, uh, but they did have a real deadline of the twenty-first to get the final logo. In two days.
Alright, so, um, um, my initial thoughts are right, and, um, I don't have a, a horse in this race at all, right? This is speaking strictly from seeing it tonight. Um, I, I know what it's like to get into the weeds, I know what it's like to be in a room full of people with differing opinions, and it's, it's a lot of work to get to this point where you, you all are. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of emotional energy, it's a lot of time, it's a lot of everything. And, uh, you know, uh, I, I wanna express my appreciation for that, right? I think you're on the right track, I think you're like, really close. But, you know, looking at it, as I'm looking at it tonight for the first time, I just feel like, me personally, I just feel like there's something missed. I'm glad that, uh, you got the gazebo in there, um, uh, the tractor, the, the Quabon. I don't have any, uh, specific ideas to say, "Hey, get this in there," right? I don't have that, I'm just saying at first glance, from somebody who's just seen it tonight in public. Um, I feel like you're really close, um, but like, I understand, uh, time, time is of the essence here, right? So, I guess this board has to decide, uh, which, which path we wanted out.
I agree with you Ed, and, and I think that's part of the reason why, uh, like, I just feel like that could be any barn, um, any gazebo, it would just be nice if there was something that, yeah, I know, um, there, there aren't going to be people from out of town that may not, that may not know it, but it could be a point of interest. Actually, that barn's not just any more barn, you could see that, you know, um, that gazebo is not just any gazebo. You know, so it, I, I feel, I, like, I've been totally agree with, agreement with Ed, and I've sat in on these meetings, I've led these meetings, and it's, this is the most annoying part, it, when you have, have the committee come into the last inning and say, "Well, then, look at this." But I think the other thing is, we provide a fresh set of eyes, you know? We haven't been involved in the project at all, so we're seeing this for the very first time. And it, it is good, it, it is good, but I don't see Belcher Town. And I think that's the most polite way I can say, if we had a barn that's like, from Belcher Town, like, you could point to that, say, "Hey, that's from the, you know, Cold Spring," or, you know, from, uh, Lamson Brook, or.
Can I make a recommendation that I think won't be hard for Katie? Is that, guys, do you remember this one here, this full barn, this was Cold Spring, right? That we had talked about? Is that something that Kate, do you recognize that barn? I recognize that barn. On Saban?
Well, if you know, that's good enough for me.
Okay. Is that, because, because Katie already has that drafted, is that something that we could pull out the barn that's there, I say leave the tractor, and put this one in just for us to see how that would look? Based on the fact that we're having a contingency meeting on Wednesday, so are you expecting this to come back around to you again for another vote? Knowing that we have such a tight timeline? Or would you trust us to put this one in and make, and, 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 and put it to a vote with the committee instead?
I'm not sure that one is the, is the barn, huh, um, but.
So this is where it gets really tricky, when you go for a specific place.
I know. Yeah.
As everyone has their vision for what a town barn looks like.
Yeah.
And this logo says is barn, and everyone can recognize it as a barn. Um, whereas all of us have our own vision for what the platonic ideal, or the Belcher. Whereas all of us have our own vision for what the platonic ideal or the Belchertown ideal of a barn looks like. And then we get into the weeds of, well, whose barn is it? Who owns it? Who has a farm stand on it? Who are we sending visitors to and tourists to?
That's a good point.
Barn's a little patronizing, right? So these were some of the things that came up, um, when it came to specificity of a barn and specificity of certain places. Are we encouraging patronage to certain barns? This is why, and Katie, you can speak to this better than anyone. There is something really valuable about legibility, but not specificity.
Uh, I mean, I'll add as well, if you think of any logos we talked about today, you know, in our committee meeting, the Apple logo. I can see it right now on Nicole's computer. It doesn't, you know, equal a computer itself or, you know, logos are meant to represent and to make you emote and to feel, um, and to provide a common ground for a lot of people. And just, yeah, echoing Danielle, you know, we tried multiple barns and the couple that were, you know, not privately owned just weren't working for the committee. And that's probably.
And this is the image that eighty-six percent of people voted yes on. We had, um, three hundred and one participants, which, uh, I don't know if Chris Martin is in the room, but he let us know that that is more than the number of people who showed up to town meeting last year and was, was really thrilled with the participation rate on that. So a good number of people have, have seen it and have co-signed on it. And the committee co-signed with their, with their vote today. And with that recommendation of making the common a little bit more specific, so.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Is there a consensus?
You good, Lisa?
Yep.
I totally, I totally get where you're coming from. I wish, like, I wish we had more time to say, can we try out a couple more barns? I don't know if we, I don't think we do.
Okay.
May I, just to stir the pot, may I ask one other question? Is one of the concerns, the barn is larger than the architecture which is representative of the town common? Would it be more palatable if the barn was slightly smaller?
Well, it's not, oh, yeah.
I think it's about the recognition of it just being a generic barn and not one that we have here in town. I think.
Well, like I said, I'm personally, I'm for what the committee agreed on.
I'm gonna make a motion. I move that we, um, accept the Belchertown logo, option A, as presented up on the screen right now.
Sorry.
Who did? You. Who sectioned it?
I did.
Very nice. Uh, roll call, who winning?
I.
Jen?
I.
Nicole?
I.
I.
Uh, I like where it's going. I don't think it's a completely finished yet, um, uh, so I'm gonna vote it out. Very good. Motion passes.
Thank you.
And I know we finished, but is this kind of a branding toolkit? Will we know what fonts are recommended?
Yes, those are the next steps.
And that is, that is a question that we have for this board, is whether the full visual identity toolkit should come back to you for another round of approval? Or if the approval of this logo extends to the approval of the visual identity toolkit with all of the images that are coming from the logo?
You don't have to all of you.
I think the committee can handle it. And with our consultants.
Could that have been decided, can I?
It doesn't, but I.
So we went, cause we're, we're like almost ten out. I'm sorry.
Do we?
Well, it's having a motion, it's just a direction.
We don't, yeah, I mean. I, personally, I feel like we, I am not a design person. Uh, it's not my expertise. I know how hard design is. And we have a project manager and a graphic designer plus our entire committee. And the branding guidelines are gonna come and pull from the logo and that's usually how design works.
Yeah.
So I'm totally happy to let the committee move forward.
I'm not ready to talk about it tonight.
Sorry, that's how I feel.
I just wanna get to the next.
Why are we talking?
So the reason you're asking is because we would deliver proportions of the kit to Stamtech on Wednesday? So we're just trying to confirm what you all need to approve before it goes on for potential fabrication?
Well, let me turn the question back to you. What do we need to approve for you to move forward?
The logo.
Okay, did we do that? Yes, okay.
And it's just a matter of, do you wanna see any other details? Or is it okay if we take all those details from what you have approved?
Absolutely, take the.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Good discussion. Uh, good work, Ed. How long, how long did that project take?
I lost. I mean, I think it was about a year ago, last time I was in Fort Worth. Not quite, it was summertime, uh, when we, when we saw the, the webinar.
Late, late summer when we started things.
It was in June, like, June we saw that webinar.
Yeah, that's when we said to do it.
Time flies, we can add fun.
And immediately like the next day.
So looking at the barn would be a really happy thing to do. I'm kidding.
I wanna thank the members of the committee that are in the room, on the, on the camera and those that are not in attendance.
Hundred percent.
Thank you for all your work.
It's never easy to get creative minds together, come up with a, a solution, so thank you. Okay, moving on. Five A, review and vote to endorse the warrant for the annual town meeting on May thirty first, twenty twenty five. We all have the warrants in our packets. The, um, uh, in the interest of time, uh, are there any specific warrant items that the board wishes to discuss? I'd rather just approve the warrant as written.
Yeah, we don't have time.
So there was, um, none of the, uh, warrant articles that are in front of you tonight have not been, uh, before you, uh, read. Town council has rearranged the order into groups so that we could move through the town meeting a little bit more efficiently. The intent is with the housekeeping ones in the beginning, to lump them all together into one vote. So articles one through seven will be voted on together.
Oh, okay.
And then the budget, um, in capital and financial articles come next. Um, those will take a little bit more time on. From there, we're gonna move into general bylaw amendments, which include personnel bylaw changes. There's some housekeeping in there as well. Once we're done with those, we're gonna move into local acceptance statutes, which, which includes the Heroes Act, voluntary contributions, uh, establishing a townwide speed limit for unposted roadways. After that, we'll be working on, uh, roadway acceptances, zoning bylaw amendments, which also may be lumped together. And Community Preservation Act appropriations at the end. There are no citizens petitions. So this has been reviewed by council, approved by council. So outside of any grammar, um, or scrupulous errors that we discovered between now and town meeting, the board's vote tonight will allow us to start preparing the, uh, warrant articles, um, and the articles themselves, uh, excuse me, the motions, um, so that we'll have the motions ready for town meeting.
Just quickly, is the senior citizen tax write-up proven? I'm just skimming.
It's there.
It's in there.
Where is it?
It's, it's towards the end.
Okay.
You saw yesterday.
We have eyes on it.
Yeah, I saw it.
Okay.
Any specific warrant items? Very good. Can I get a motion?
I move that we endorse the warrant for the annual town meeting on May thirty first, twenty twenty five.
As written.
As written.
Second?
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Voila. Okay, five B is, um, we have a visitor tonight to talk about, uh, approving the proclamation for the two hundredth anniversary of Lafayette's farewell tour. So we can turn it over to Cliff. Uh, before he starts, so I just wanna let the board know, um, the two members tonight who are, um, their terms end.
Yes.
They will remain select board members until such time as the, their, um, replacements are sworn in. So assuming that we have one, um, or two new members tonight, we can continue going until I get word from Adele Clark.
The town board's gonna text you when, uh, like before she's about to.
Okay, so we can go past eight o'clock?
Yes.
You can't, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yes.
I apologize, I'm. That's why I was confused, but that's okay.
Yeah, but the, the, it's, it's been, uh, it's been suggested that, uh, the queue be sworn in by about eight o' five, eight ten.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we don't have a lot of time, but we'll be able to go.
Think they're gonna know that quickly?
That's what, um, has been suggested, yeah.
Okay.
So I, I will stop the meeting when I hear, when I, when I have word.
Okay.
Very good.
Well, let's see what we have to.
Is there any value?
That doesn't mean you have to, you don't have to conclude, it just means.
It means that, you mean you have to.
Is there any value in doing C before we do, um, B? In getting the?
No, cause that can wait.
Okay.
Very good. Mr. McCarthy, welcome.
Thank you. Um, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Cliff McCarthy. I'm the, um, archivist at the Stone House Museum, uh, here in Belchertown. For months now, I've been working with a group called the American Friends of Lafayette. In eighteen twenty five, well, eighteen twenty four, it started. Lafayette was invited, um, by the President of the United States to take a grand tour of the United States. Lafayette was a beloved general from the American Revolution, um, French born. Came to the US on his own dime, volunteered.
Could I, could I, could I just, um, ask a question of the board? Has the board read this, Lafayette, about Lafayette?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, Cliff, would you mind if I made a motion to see if we, uh, might agree on this?
Sure, board. Yeah?
Okay. So I make a motion that we approve the proclamation for the two hundred and, uh, two hundredth anniversary of Lafayette's farewell tour, eighteen twenty four to eighteen, eighteen twenty five, brought forward by, uh, Cliff McCarthy. This will be in conjunction with an event that will be held at, in the front of Town Hall.
Awesome. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, it's too good old fashioned roll call for winning.
I, and this is so cool. Thank you for bringing this to us.
Jen?
I, um, I still would like, Cliff, you're the opposite.
Yeah.
Nicole?
I.
Lisa?
Hi.
Hi. Cliff, it's approved. Anything else you wanna add to this? Do you want us to take it back?
Um, it would be really great if one of you, one of the board members, um, were at the event on June fourteenth to read the ra- read the proclamation.
Yeah, what time?
June fourteenth is a Saturday.
I think it's on, oh, it's itinerary, I believe.
Two o'clock. Um, the, the general will be arriving.
Is it you?
By coach.
Hmm, is it you?
No. No, the, the general, uh, Lafayette will be, um, portrayed by a, a gentleman from colonial Williamsburg, actually.
Okay, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah.
At two o'clock?
Two o'clock.
Sure.
Does she have to dress up?
That would be wonderful.
Wait, if I do, I'm gonna take that back.
No, you do not.
Can I be susie?
Um, I, let me just say though, um, I, I have, um, invited, um, both Aaron Saunders and, and Jake Olivera to the event. And Jake, um, his representative said he would love to dress up. He has a, he's already decked out. He's got a costume on that, you know, he, he apparently portrayed by Hamilton at some event.
He's seen it.
And, um, and so she was, she was suggesting that, um, Jake might actually show up in a costume.
No, he's, he's gonna have to.
Lisa, you're gonna have to invest some money.
Well, we have a costume. If you have a costume, I'll do it.
Okay.
And you.
Be careful about that because it's also Living History Day at the Stone House Museum. And there'll be a whole bunch of reenactors, um, dressed in Revolutionary War garb coming to the event. So we might just have a costume for you. So be careful.
It's a whole day's.
I'll do it, that's, I'm into the spirit.
It's a whole day's worth of events.
Um, the Living History Day will be a whole day worth of events that'll be finishing at two o'clock when Lafayette arrives. He has a, a morning event in Northampton. He'll be going to Ware and Brookfield afterwards.
Would you do me a favor and just send me sort of like a snapshot so I know what's gonna happen?
Sure. Sure. Here's the press release going out this.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you, Cliff.
Any other questions?
I know you guys are nervous.
Yes, sir. Next, Cliff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, can I get a motion for five C?
We want it read, the whole, we have a proposed motion here, I can read it.
Yes, please.
I move the board appoint Sarah Mann, treasurer, collector, to act as custodian for tax title properties taken by the town for back taxes. It further grants her as the treasurer of the town to fully authorize and empower in the name of or on behalf of the town to acquire properties through tax title foreclosure on behalf of the town and to offer for sale or sell the same on behalf of the town. And in conjunction thereto, to execute any and all instruments, documents and agreements that are deemed necessary or appropriate for the consummation of sale of said tax title properties, including but not limited to the execution of deeds, affidavits and related instruments, hereby ratifying, confirming and approving that all, and approving all that said treasurer has done or may do with respect to the acquisition of tax title properties through tax title foreclosure and the sale of the same.
Second, and.
Does it, did it retract the October twenty three?
Oh.
I guess. The motion itself didn't have a date, but this does that help?
Oh, right, yeah.
We have to have a date.
We have to have a.
Yeah.
She doesn't have to say the whole thing.
I'm kidding.
Can you amend, can you amend the motion, please, to include that date?
I'd like to amend the emotion, um, the emotion. I'd like to amend the motion. I'd like to amend the motion, um, to retro it back to October twenty seventh, twenty twenty three.
Second.
So we're voting on the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Uh, now we're voting on the, uh, the main motion with the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
All right, you want me to run through six quick?
Yes, please.
Uh, let's see. Warrants, um, Sports Haven project is back off the bid, went off the bid on the fourteenth. We're gonna have a site walk on the twenty eighth and we'll bring bids in June. I did meet with the, uh, Chair of the Buildings and Browns Committee and I started to look at the town surplus property with them. As you recall, there's a hundred and ninety-one properties that were identified and we're gonna start sorting through those. I did sit down with the fire chief for beginning the development of a sculptor work for the organizational audit. The elevator was due to start this week, uh, excuse me, last week, and it's been delayed for, um, probably three weeks, um, due to.
And then it'll start?
And then it should start, yeah.
It's working, we can use it, all right?
Correct, yeah. And then, uh, so that's it for, for there. In seven, um, on the town meeting mark, we have the zoning change request for Castle D. That'll further that project. Six and eight Berkshire, we're gonna be applying for a grant, um, to do some infrastructure improvements. So we're gonna hold off again for a little while longer on, on RFP. Agile tower removal is done. It is picked up in, um, uh, job description review. This week, Joanne has gone through the, uh, Deputy Fire Chief for the, uh, Fire Department, the administrative secretary for the, uh, Town Manager Select Board's Office. We received a resignation from Amber Dorit. So she's leaving at the end of June.
From, I'm sorry, from who?
Amber.
Yep.
Oh.
Um, she also looked at the BCTV Web Content Manager and Production Assistant for Esther. The Financial Organizational Review Project is done. Our next meeting is May thirty first at eight AM. We usually have a quick meeting before the special town meeting and then the annual town meeting. If there's nothing that is pending, um, we can always cancel that. So we haven't posted an agenda yet. I'll be working with the Chair on that. And then FY twenty six budget update. We are ready to go depending on tonight's vote. That's all I have.
Uh, what's the grant work being done at six and eight?
Uh, we're gonna apply for a one-stop grant for.
Water and sewer.
Yeah, water and sewer, um, I don't.
Electric, maybe, and maybe parking lot, I can't remember.
No, the parking lot, electric's not in there. Just water and sewer, um, under the, um, infrastructure grant.
So the pipe, repairing the pipes?
Yep.
So I'm assuming that that will make it more attractive for buyers?
Absolutely.
Yeah, very smart.
Okay, any mail? Get your minutes on this week? Did your board member report, sweetie?
I'll make it fast. I'll make it fast. I just, I attended the library board meeting this week. Um I mentioned I attended the the branding meeting and um thank you all for signing the citation for the Eagle Scout ceremony. It was very well received. And then I attended my first Boat Umbrella of Wellness event. It was great. What a wonderful event. We'll go back next year. And um I went to the Lamson Brook Farm tag sale and got to tour the old barn and learn some more of the history, which is wonderful. And then I voted today. And hopefully everyone else did too, 'cause the polls are closed.
Yeah, everyone's closed. Jen?
I have no idea. I went to the water district meeting. We had a, what meeting did we have last?
With the Valley CDC.
The Valley CDC. We had a meeting with the Valley CDC executive director to talk about what they can offer to our Belcher Town businesses.
Hmm.
Um and um we're gonna start promoting some of their events. I'm sure that there's a whole heckle about more. Today's election, I stood out in the freezing cold. I have no idea. Okay. Ed, it's been a pleasure serving with you.
Nicole? Is that a match to have?
No, doesn't at all. Nails, baby. Yes, very close.
Um school committee, April fifteenth and May sixth, branding committee, April sixteenth, May seventh, May fourteenth, May nineteenth, and April twenty ninth, BCTV candidates night virtually.
Very nice.
Hannah voted.
Okay, um I met with Chief Bakounis and um uh Officer Vinnie to discuss um uh the pride event on June first. And um I also went to uh Leveraging Arts and Culture for Substance Use Convention on May twelfth. Uh and that's it for now, except for it's been a pleasure working with you there.
Well, thank you. Yeah, just one final thing to say quick. I just wanted to um thank you personally, Ed, for um your years of service, not only to Belcher Town but to our country. For those of you who don't know, Ed served in the Air Force from nineteen eighty-eight to nineteen ninety-two. Um he started here with the finance committee in two thousand fourteen. Uh he uh joined the select board in two thousand eighteen. And in that time, um he's had a lot of accomplishments, probably too many to discuss tonight because I know we're on short time. Um but Ed was the champion for closing the structural deficit um and also the visionary for the uh rehabilitation and reconstruction of the Chestnut Hill Community School Recreation Area, the basketball courts, the pickleball courts. He was the one that was constantly in the background saying, we gotta get this done. Um so with that, I'm just gonna say thank you. Um I appreciate the support um that you've given the town over those years as well as the extra support you gave me over the last two years. I appreciate it.
Very good. The um thank you all for the kind words. The uh the only thing I have to say is it it's uh it takes more than one person. It really takes the will of the board to get anything done of s- of substance. And uh for that, I've been grateful to work with uh some great folks, including this this year's uh season. So as you move forward to next season, there'll be at least one new person here, uh maybe two. And it's really the collective will and all the different perspectives that we all bring and how they all uh come together at some point, right? They don't always start off, you know, in in lockstep, but uh eventually it's the strength of how they come together that moves the town forward. So I wish this board and next season's board and future boards uh the greatest of success as you deliberate like serious issues, right? Um we got uh and and you know, even though we're a small municipality, uh the issues are still the same, right? So it's it's all about teamwork and uh you know, moving forward. So along those lines, the um I I'd like to say like, you know, my number one team are my two sons in the back row, the uh. Guess it means a lot. Thanks for showing up tonight. That's it. Motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.